Very good.
We do have two minutes, but.
Okay, let's see, we've got John, myself, Ernie and Marina, we got everybody.
Can everyone see the agenda?
No.
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 I've got it on my phone, that's all I have.
How about now?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it. Okay. A minute to spare. Tito, can you tell if we've got any visitors yet?
We do have Joe Holland, so I'm going to promote him so that he can speak. There he is.
Okay. All right. I believe it's time to get started. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the August 2022 zoning board of appeals meeting. My name is Kelly Donovan, I'm the chair of this board. For those of you who've never attended one of our meetings, I'll quickly explain how the meeting is conducted. In the real world, this is done in person, not on Zoom, and hopefully we'll be doing that soon. Tito, do you know if we're going to be doing that next month?
We do not know yet, we should know by the fifteenth.
Okay, well, if you're an applicant, first thing we'll do is ask you to state your name and address for the record and then discuss your proposed project or request for variance. The floor after that will, the floor will be open for anyone who would like to speak in favor or against the proposed project. Once everyone's had an opportunity to speak, the public hearing will be officially closed and no new testimony will be taken. After public hearings have been held, the board will deliberate and make a decision on each case. You're welcome to stay throughout the deliberations, but again, no public input is permitted unless we ask you for it directly. For those applicants who wish not to stay through the deliberations, planning department staff will be available tomorrow with the board's decision. Zoning Bill, zoning board of appeals is a five-member board. Tonight, we have four members present constituting a quorum. I will now call the roll. Ms. Presidentity. Hi, Mr. Matzo.
Present.
Mr. Landers.
Present.
Mr. Donovan, present, and that's four for four, we're short one seat at the moment. I saw that Tito had sent out two months worth of meeting minutes. Did you all get a chance to take a look at them?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, any comments, corrections, motions?
Make the motion to pass the two months worth of meeting minutes?
As written, can I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That looks unanimous. All right, and that probably gets us just a little early to our next section. Got three minutes. Do we, Tito, do we have any other business that we can discuss before we get into the first applicant?
Um, not really, we could go through the recusal motions for John and
Okay.
And then, and then the applicant can speak too, we just can't open the public hearing until 5:20.
Okay, all right, well then, let's start with that, the first, yeah.
I'd like to make the motion to recuse myself for the seventy-six Main Street because my company is doing work.
Okay, so I, in actuality, what that'll mean here is you'll have no input once we get to the public meeting part and you can just hang out and we'll tap you again when it's time for the parking variance to be seen. All right, any, just any further discussion on that? The motion to accept Mr. Matzo's recusal, can I get a second?
Again.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Thank you. And is the applicant for the American Legion Post eighty-seventy-six Main Street assigned variance to allow an electronic message center is, are you available online here? Who's going to be representing American Legion for the sign variance?
Joe, you can go ahead, I see you're unmuted.
This is Joe Holland from.
Joe, tell us about your variance.
We're seeking to, the internally illuminated with their post name as well. Static LED sign double-sided in front of the location to replace the existing ID sign and changeable copy sign that they have onsite right now.
Okay. So the yellow sign is going to go away?
Yes.
Do we have a, oh, that's in the back, that's what it's going to look like.
So there's a yellow sign and then there's also a freestanding changeable copy sign.
That's going to stay?
No, that's going to go away as well.
Oh, so we're reducing the overall signage area?
Yes.
Okay. Very good, any, any questions from members of the board?
Where's the new sign going? Is it in the same location as either one of those signs?
It's in place of where the yellow sign is.
Okay, all right.
And the rendering looks like it's going to be right in the same two holes. Virtually. Question for the staff, the size, is that, the size of the proposal, is that within acceptable pedestal sign dimensions?
Yep, the only barriers that they, is the because of its proximity to a residential zoning district.
Okay, the words on there, like the Thursday bingo, is that going to be streaming or is that going to be static?
The, that was just an example of what could be placed on the LED sign.
Are the messages going to be static or streaming?
Is my understanding that they are supposed to be static, that would change, I believe every sixty seconds is what's permitted.
Okay.
No motion or flashing or any of anything like that.
Okay, and the colors are representative from what we can see?
It's a full color board, when they originally came to us a couple of years ago about this, they had wanted a monochromatic, that discontinued by the company that makes them, they only make full color modules now.
Makes sense, it's all LEDs, right?
Yes.
Yep.
The American Post AD with the logo, weekends in New York, that will be permanent, that's part of internally illuminated cabinet. Sand face with translucent vinyl graphics on it.
Is that going to be lit just during business hours or twenty-four seven?
I do not know, I don't, Cod had any comments on that for me when we went to them and approved it. I can check with my contact there to find out what the plan is, but I don't know myself.
Okay.
That's directly across from the gas station, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then there's a church to the right, if you're faithful.
Yes.
Okay.
That also has one of the signs in front of it.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Ernie, any, have any questions?
No.
I think overall looks pretty, pretty good. Looks like it'll be a nice updating to the sign.
Yeah, I like the new signs.
Yeah. Okay. Excuse me. If you guys come up with more questions, we can discuss them during our deliberations. Just checking through the paperwork, see if there's anything else, this one doesn't need a two thirty-nine. I don't see anything.
Nope.
Very good. Then I guess our next step would be to make a motion to open the public hearing for seventy-six Main Street, American Legion regarding their sign, could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, do we have anybody online waiting to speak there, Tito, or any staff member?
We do not have any phone calls right now and we did not receive any letters for this project.
Okay.
We do have two people in the attendees list, I would ask that if you want to speak about this project, please use the raise your hand, raise hand feature.
Very good, and if anybody happens to be otherwise listening to this, could you give them a phone number to call in?
Yes, they can call six zero seven 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 two seven zero two eight.
Very good, thank you very much. Nobody's raised their hand, I'm taking it.
No.
Okay. How about we leave the public hearing open and I'll go through the, the seeker? Just. Okay. You can't blame me for trying, Brian. All right, all right, it was good to see you, Brian.
Thank you.
Just trying to keep you on your toes.
Can you guys hear Brian clearly?
I can.
Okay, good.
You getting a little feedback there?
I hear something coming from somewhere, but it's not, not too bad. No calls so far.
Okay.
Brian suggested we wait until five twenty-seven, just give him one more minute.
Okay, we will do that. Five twenty-seven by my clock. So, motion to close the public hearing for seventy-six Main Street American Legion signage, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, at this point, I would note that this project has been reviewed and approved by the Commission on Architecture and Urban Design or COD, and I would also like to propose a couple of motions that that ZBA be lead agency for seeker and type of action is this?
Unlisted.
Thank you, and that it is unlisted action, can I get a second for those two motions? I see the second and all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 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 very good, I will go through this short list of criteria. There, I see they've left a couple, the staff has left a couple of blanks for us to discuss. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? And we needed to decide whether it's nowhere small impact or moderate to large impact. And I would argue that it would be no to small impact in that area. Yes, it is adjacent to a residential area, but there's a considerable amount of commercial activity right in the area, I don't think it will be a large impact, very small impact. Will the proposed action result in a change in the user intensity of use of land? No, it should be the same intensity. Will the proposed action impair the character quality of the existing community? Hey, get out of there, sorry. Dogs. A signage could have the potential to, would you cut it out? Sorry. It could, something like this could impair the character equality of the existing community, I think in this location. It would have little to no impact on the character. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? Signage, no, that should not have an effect. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walk base should have no effect? Will proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Should have no, no impact. Will proposed action impact existing public private water supplies or public private wastewater treatment utilities should have no effect? Will the proposed action impair the character quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic, or aesthetic resources? May have a minor impact, I would say, again, mainly would fit in with the neighborhood, actually, it'd be improvement in some ways. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion flooding or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Having gone through those criteria, I would make a motion for a negative seeker impact, could I get a second? I see a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. All right, and that will get us to our deliberations, I believe. Okay. So the, the issue that we're dealing with primarily is EMCs are not permitted within two hundred feet of residential zoning, zone district. And it's in in north and south directions meets that criteria, I believe, but let's go through the criteria, is it an undesirable change to go from the current signage to the EMC? Was there a reasonable alternative considered? Is it a substantial request, is it, will it cause an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions? And whether or not it was self-created? Is it an undesirable change? I would argue no, because the current sign, the current sign is not a great looking sign, I'm sure John, even though he can't comment here, would probably agree wholeheartedly on that. It's, it's a very, I mean, it's been there as long as I can remember, and I mean, it's kind of just always been there without much change. Both signs, the so I think in a lot of ways, it'll be a desirable change to see it needn't up one sign rather than two, it'll clearly identify what they're doing and what's going on currently, so any other comment?
I agree.
And I do too.
Excuse me, reasonable alternative. I would argue that it would be hard to come up with the same sign in today's world to find a sign of that vintage or, or the same built-in capabilities. I'm not really, I'm not really sure there is an alternative to going with a more current sign. And from the looks of it, they chose something that's pretty, and they were even looking at monochrome. So they were looking for less impact, but that's not even really a choice. So I'm, I'm satisfied that they've looked at reasonable alternatives to get to where they are now. How about you guys?
I agree.
Okay, is it a substantial request? Let's see, staff comments said it's approximately one hundred fifty-eight feet from the nearest residential zone, zoning district, or two hundred feet is the maximum. I would have thought it'd be closer. But that's fine. Hundred fifty-eight versus two hundred?
I really don't think it's location, I mean, there's no, not that I think of any residential houses immediately in front of it or to the sides of it, so that's all commercial.
Yeah. Yeah, right in the general, I mean, that's, that's going to be able to see it.
Yeah.
It is pretty much all commercial, so I don't think going from two hundred to one fifty-eight is going to be a huge, it's not going to be noticeable.
Kelly, just for the record, the, the nearest residential property or zoning district boundary, I should say, it's not even the property itself. It's a hundred fifty-eight feet to the north of the sign, which would be behind the lot, so between this sign, there would be the whole American Legion building.
Yeah, they could never see it.
Yeah, and then more space before you get to the first house.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, so that's not substantial at all.
No.
Thank you for the clarification. With this, with granting this variance causing adverse impact to physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, I really, I really couldn't come up with a scenario that would make it adverse unless I mean, this was blinking, you know, blaring. It doesn't produce any sound. So I really don't see how it could cause an adverse impact. Then moving on to the last thing, was it self-created? Sure, but I think it's time for a new sign, I appreciate them wanting to put the money into making their place stay recognizable and they provide a great service. Any other comments on the, on the criteria?
No, I agree.
Ernie, would you like to propose a motion we can vote on?
I can't see that. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, well then I will.
Sorry.
That's okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the sign variance for the American Legion Post at seventy-six Main Street for an EMC within two hundred feet, actually one hundred fifty-eight feet of a residential zoning district where, where it is not permitted. Could I get a second? Like, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's unanimous. Mr. Holland, go forth and do signs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming to see us. All right, I think at this point, we can welcome Mr. Matzo back. We didn't lose you, did you, did we?
I see his name there.
I see him laughing.
He's still muted.
Yeah, well, he's getting sick.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah.
Good.
We're on to case number two. Marchuska Brothers Construction, forty-nine Port Street, area variance to allow no, no landscaping, where a five-foot wide landscape buffer is required for the expansion of an existing parking lot. I think I've seen the applicant, if you could state your name and address for the record and give us a run-through of your variance.
This is Justin Marchuska, thirty-three Thistlewood Drive, James.
Justin. Thank you, tell us about your proposal.
Well, our proposal, we currently own the metro center and we would like to add nine additional parking spots on the church. There's a sidewalk we'd like to maintain for the church, we allow the church to use our we allow the church to use our parking lot, no charge and for different things, weddings, et cetera, funerals, we like to maintain that sidewalk. And we, because of that, and because of that, we're required to, to the zoning board.
Okay. Could we put, staff, could we go to the to the kind of site plan? Perfect. So on the right-hand side, that's where the entrance to the parking lot is?
Correct.
Off of Henry Street, the church is to the right as you're entering into the parking area?
Correct.
Okay, and the, and the nine spots are right in the very center of the drawing. Okay. Now, that's going to require a little bit of construction or demolition, are there any trees in that area that are going to have to be removed?
There are not.
I didn't think so. Okay, do you have anything else to add before we get into more questions for you?
No, we don't.
Okay, members of the board, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I don't think I do.
Okay, I just took a drive past this on my way home from work, so I, I have a very good or at least a fresh kind of idea of what the area looks like. Okay. Now, I did see on here and it was a question for staff. It says this requires a two thirty-nine?
It does, and
We do have one.
Yes.
Did they? What was their conclusion?
They are recommending denial, which means that you would need a super majority to approve. You would need a simple majority to deny.
Okay.
It says that there's existing tree removal and there's no trees there, so I don't understand why they're asking for denial on this.
Oh, there used to be trees along.
No longer.
But there are still trees on the lot with the, the churches on.
Right, but he says they're not removing any trees.
Right.
The reason it was recommended that it be denied, we, we believe is that the site plan for the original construction required a placement of trees, the trees were recently removed, like over fifteen trees were recently removed from the park. That's what they're, they're referencing.
Yep.
Okay.
And did that have to be approved by anyone, Brian?
The removal, the removal was not approved by anybody.
Well, they were all, they were dead, right?
Were contingent, my understanding is that they were contingency of this original site.
I got a question for the applicant, do you have any plans at all for any kind of landscaping elsewhere? Sometimes we talk about providing landscaping elsewhere in a, in a project to kind of mitigate the lack of it where it's required.
We, when we remove, when, reason we removed the trees and there were some shrubs and things there, when we bought the metro center, that was, we removed the trees, I think it was when we bought the building roughly four years ago or so, maybe coming up on a little bit more. A lot of them were, were like, but at the top, they like ran into them, the shrubs were really grossly overgrown. And to top it off, we had a gentleman drive his bike through the parking lot at like two o'clock in the morning, the chain, and our insurance company paid him like over a hundred thousand dollars. It's like a chain that, it's like certain leases in place when we purchased it from, it was held in escrow when we, when we got it and essentially, we wanted to keep everything as open as possible. Essentially, we wanted to keep everything as open as possible for safety and just uh parents, you know, so. Could see what's going on. Um, our insurance company made some recommendations and and like you mentioned uh. The uh, everything was purely, it had passed its lifespan. Um, we went back and we installed grasses. And we mulched, we just mulched the building this year. Um, it was just, if you drove by today, we just sealed the parking lot over the weekend. Um, so we do, we didn't maintain it really, really nice. Um, unfortunately, we're just, you know, our fear is. In trees back there, the safety of people walking through there and then additionally, like like you said, this. Person who uh ran into a chain and then he ended up getting, I think it was at least a hundred thousand dollar settlement. Um, months from our insurance company. It was basically about like two o'clock in the morning.
Some of these, some of those stories are amazing.
What is the link between the tree chain across the entrance and the trees being removed? What, how does that link to each other?
Um, cuz essentially, you know, people kind of going through there, we wanted to take and. Um, we we went went ahead and added a guardrail going around the parking lot and James, who's in our office, got approval. With the uh, with the city before we did it, um, but we can limit uh access. Going through our parking lot and us eliminate um possibly transient uh. Traffic or people going through our uh individuals walking through or riding their bike through our parking lot. So in order to do that. Um, you know, those brushes and trubs had to be eliminated.
But what about the trees? And I'm not talking about the low lines, like the juniper that were low line.
That's what I'm speaking of is the trees, because if the trees were there, we wouldn't have been able to guard rail on this. At the wood guardrail.
You're talking about the. The entries.
I'm not talking about the gate at the entrance. This goes around the perimeter of our property. It's a wood.
Okay.
The pictures on the application, I think you'll have a better idea of what he's talking about.
Okay. Well, when I was talking about.
Just goes around the perimeter instead of a chain link. Correct.
Hasn't that been there for almost twelve years, that fence and then the trees were behind that in the in the mulch beds?
Trees would have been essentially in that in that area where the guardrail is. Um, right, the chain and uh around the McFarland area has, and I'm speaking, there's a chain. That cordoned off the McFarland uh parking from the rest of the parking for the Metro Center.
Yep.
Been there for a long period of time, but eventually the hope was with this. Um, to satisfy our insurance company eliminates, you know, traffic going through there and the possibility of of. In the future.
I I understand that, but I don't get the connection between that and removing the trees from the. The landscape buffers.
Trees, the trees wouldn't have been able to guard rail there with a size hole. One of want to survive and they would have, I mean, you can see the location of the guardrail.
But they had been there for about fifteen years and they had survived just fine with that guardrail in place.
Guardrail wasn't there at that time, sir. Guardrail was installed. I don't know, was it one year ago, years ago?
I saw it reinstalled, but I remember there being an old one there before that.
I I can assure you, if you look at any picture from a year ago when James is here to attach from my our project manager. There was never a wood guardrail there.
Okay.
Just curving.
Correct.
Okay, now, back to my initial question, um, in the area where you're looking at nine new spots. Uh, it's where there's existing sidewalk that's gonna be cut out. You're really not removing any vegetation. But the concern or the sometimes what we consider as in lieu of having. Landscaping right near the project that's at hand to provide additional landscaping somewhere else on the property. And that's something we've considered where it mitigates the the impact of the no no landscape. Just just throwing it out there. I'm not saying it's a requirement or anything, just something to talk about for a minute.
I guess, you know, I'm not really sure exactly where it would go with the guardrail there. It would be, in my opinion, kind of tough to fit through that area. Um, I mean, I saw in the notes, you know. If there was, you know, when we when we this, if there was three or something in that general vicinity. We had to add a few. I'm not opposed to that. I just. I'm kind of stating where where we are with the with the current. Uh, um, situation with the with the guardrail.
Okay, just just wanted to throw it out there. That's all, that's fine. Um, any other questions for the applicant?
Kelly, could I make a comment on?
Sure can.
Uh, smaller trees would would do fine in those mulch beds um in the vicinity of the guardrail. Um, and I also want to point out the staff comment that um if. Uh, there are there are nine spaces proposed, if they were to. Use one of those for a nine by eighteen landscape island, they can put a tree there. Um, so that's another alternative and they do have interior landscape islands existing. Um, as you can see here, these are existing uh landscape islands that used to have trees in them. Where they could put trees right now, uh, where there are no guardrails, so they have they have some alternatives.
That's kind of what I was referring to. To use current spaces, they're probably mulched right now. And they probably look fine. But to consider putting uh something there. Just consider, not in a minute, and I'm not saying it has to be done either.
Not not to interrupt, but I mean, the grasses are are nice cuz they're low and they they help with visibility of people coming out of the lots cuz. A lot of people, when they're coming in late from work, it's they tend to fly through our lot a little bit and it. It does help to have that extra bit of visibility, so nobody gets get hit. Does make a comment.
Well, there are also trees that have a relatively long stem with plenty of sight. Uh, line underneath them too. There are things, there are many things to consider. And you could talk to the Shade Tree Commission and get some recommendations on trees, but I I would just like you to consider. The the use of something like that that could mitigate some of the heat island effect. Just to consider it. Okay. Members of the board, any question, any more questions before we get to the next parts?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, then, at this point, I would like to move to open the public hearing portion of this. Uh, for forty nine Court Street, Marchuska Brothers Construction on their uh proposed parking space additions. Is there anybody's um that you that you can see Tito that's looking to participate?
Um, I see Mark Yanati. I don't know if he would like to speak.
I will, I will note at this point that in our package, uh, we got a. We got a um letter from Mister Yanati uh in favor of this project and. Well, well worded and I heartily agree with the words in there. Uh, if you would like to speak, that you're welcome to do so, sir.
I I would appreciate just a a little bit of time if you don't mind.
Sure, absolutely.
And uh, thank you very much. Um, good evening, planning board. Um, I just want to touch on a couple of things. Um, certainly, I. Never want you guys to misconstrue my love and passion for Binghamton as a tax because that's certainly not my goal. But I also feel it necessary to speak my mind or, you know, be very um. Oh, what's the word, open-minded and 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 I don't like to deviate from my, you know, principles when it comes to my passion for downtown. And you know, look, it's been a very tough couple of years for a lot of people. Um, cer- certainly, the the office uh environment is very challenging, which the Metro Center consists of. Majority of offices and there are certainly some vacancies there. And, you know, a tremendous incentive to attract people is or tenants to a downtown market is having the proper parking. And look, in a perfect world, sure, it'd be lovely to have some trees, you know, um. But unfortunately, I think it's important to understand that that. You know, these gentlemen or this organization is paying the square, they're they're paying. Tax dollars or taxes on every square foot of that parking lot and that building with vacancies or not. And it's really important for the city to to get behind. And and uh really march with these guys and 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 help them be successful as possible. With these projects and allowing them, giving them, you know, favorable decisions in the planning board. As I said before, you know, my my frustration with with a little bit, my frustration comes with. And and again, I'm not trying to personally attack the city. There's been. Countless amount of trees that have been removed around the city and the downtown market down by um. Where uh the beer tree just opened up. None of these have been replaced. And I think that you have to practice what you preach. You can't expect people to invest their dollars. On these things when they already have challenges with vacancies. They do an outstanding job with the maintenance of of that facility. And uh, look, one of my former business partners or current business partners formally owned that place. And there's no comparison to the way it's been maintained since the Marchuskas have taken it over. It's always well-maintained, very meticulous. I pay attention to these things and sometimes less is more. I I see that they they put low plantings there in the last couple of years along with the installation of the guardrail. I'm not sure who was speaking earlier with the respect to saying that there was a guardrail there, but. Uh, if you've walked in the downtown market in that area, there's never been a guardrail there. And I would love to see pictures of when they think they saw it there. But more importantly, the dead trees there and plantings existed for years, I may even say a decade. And and there there was no uh uh enforcement with the remove. Requiring or requesting historical owners to remove dead trees. And now you have an organization that comes and they clean up the area. They put some low plantings in. Everyone has your taste. I I respect the fact that I'm not opposed to trees. But I also think you have to work with people's budgets and. You know, trees require more maintenance. They can be obstructions sometimes. Um. So without going on a tangent, I'm hoping that you guys will continue to be open-minded and understand that. That this helps the economy downtown or the marketability to tenants that in turn help different businesses downtown. I think the less challenges and obstructions of getting their approval is the better for everybody. And hopefully in the future, when things are better or they can remain open-minded and if there's an opportunity to. Maybe add some trees to the area around the property, I don't think that they'll be opposed to that. But I think it's important to to encourage them to move forward with this and and show them your support.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Uh, anybody else that's online that you see Tito?
Uh, no calls, uh, and we do have an attendee, but their hand's not raised. Um, and if I could just state for the record, um. The taxes and finances were mentioned uh in that comment, just a reminder to the board that that's not something that. That the board is supposed to consider when making these decisions. Um, and then and then one more thing, as far as uh the city removing or replacing trees, the city's making a a multimillion dollar. Investment in that uh very area through the Deco District Project to plant. Um, you know, a couple dozen trees there. Great.
Okay. Um.
Um, I I can give the number out one more time, Kelly, just in case. To call in with the comment, six zero seven 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 two seven zero two eight.
Thank you.
Um, and to the attendee Nate, if you would like to speak about this project, um, please just raise your hand.
And just for clarification, we're not trying to give the applicant a hard time. We have to consider all these things since. The requirements say, you know. X, Y, and Z, we have to explore all all aspects of X, Y, and Z. Um, to make sure that we're not just. We have to be somewhat consistent, yet listen to the applicant.
Um, I understand.
Each each and every time. I I I know you understand. You've been through this process a number of times. What time we shooting for, Tito? Six, straight up at six to be?
Oh, let's see, five twenty-five was when the public hearing was announced for, so. I think we're okay to to close the public hearing. Oh, one second, we have a chat. Okay, that was, that's Justin. Okay. Uh, yeah, I think we're okay to to close the public hearing.
Okay, um, all right then, at this point, I would make a motion to close the public hearing for forty nine Court Street. Marchuska Brothers uh regarding parking uh changes. Can I get a second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, public hearing is closed. I would like to make another uh pair of motions. Uh, that this is an unlisted action and for ZBA to be lead agency for for Seeker. Could I get a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, I've got the same shortlist to go through. Bear with me, folks. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use or zoning, land use plan or zoning regulations? Uh, and we have to decide whether it's uh little to small impact or moderate impact. And uh. Overall, I would argue that it was a small impact uh to for the for the type of uh. Type of action they're requesting. Nine spaces with uh, there's a five-foot. Landscape barrier that's required per code, per code or per zoning, but I would say small impact base. Based on the size of the property and the and the parking lot. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use of use or intensity of use of land? No, it should be the same intensity. Will the proposed action impair the character quality of the existing community? Existing, it will be no change, so. I mean, it'll be a removal of some concrete in actuality. From current, so I would say no to small impact. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public, private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, floor and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? That one is unchecked. We need to uh discuss whether it's uh small impact or larger. I would argue that we've got same permeable permeable space as before. Um, there's no change in that. So I would say small impact uh versus a larger impact. Uh, will it pose actually create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? And I would say no. So having gone through the list, I would make a motion for a negative declaration for secret. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, that gets us to discussing the criteria. Excuse me for a second.
Mister Chairman, this is Brian Seacrest. Uh, I just want to correct something on the record. I had said that I remembered seeing the railing there years ago. We went back and looked at some historic photographs. There was not a railing there. There were trees along that side. And there were some low-growing shrubs, but there was not a railing along that. Along that that applicant was absolutely correct.
Yeah. Well, thank you for for clarifying that for us. And I'd say the railing does do a nice job of containing the area, defining it. It doesn't and it looks it looks good. So the criteria, whether this is an undesirable change by granting this variance, whether the. Benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method. Is there an alternative? Whether it's substantial, is it an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions and whether or not it was self created? So. Let's start with the undesirable change. Is it a desirable change? To allow the lack of a landscape buffer. In the area of these. New parking spots. What do y'all think?
I'd say no, because it's just concrete being removed. There's no plants being removed. No other vegetation. So no.
Yeah, I agree with Marina on that.
Okay. Now, I gotta, I'm just kind of. What would that five foot remaining section of sidewalk be used for? Is that just for people walking out of the parking lot?
There's a walk. Are you, is that for the applicant or for staff? That question?
That was just kind of a rhetorical question to that I hadn't thought of previously.
That that would allow pedestrians to go from Henry Street into the metro center or from Henry Street into one of the.
Without walking down the driving lane.
Right, or to to access the church as well where the entrance is.
Yeah, I see the wider part being very useful. Okay. Yeah, I can. I agree with Marina on that. It's not a, it's not an undesirable change from current. So I'm happy with that. The benefit was, have we considered any alternatives? And this is kind of what I was getting at with landscaping being done elsewhere in the lot. And you could argue that you've improved the applicant has improved the landscaping by removing the dead trees. And maintaining the mulch and keeping the permeable surfaces in good condition and. Taking up the water that they they do take up. Is that enough? Is is that enough to meet the intent of the zoning? I mean, if if we if we held them strictly to to the five feet. Buffer, this project would be pointless. Right?
Right.
So I mean, the only, the only way to even come close to meeting the requirement is with an alternative. Some of the alternative they have done, as I was just talking about, the improvements they've made to the site with mulching and. Weeding and just the regular care of the of the site. Is that enough?
Kelly, could I make a comment?
Yeah.
So. If they oriented the parking to forty five degrees, they could fit the five foot buffer and keep five feet of sidewalk. So. There is an alternative that allows parking sidewalk landscaping in drive aisles. But I just wanted to point that out, obviously.
Did you guys, just a quick question for the applicant? Did you guys consider that at all? Doing doing a different orientation of parking?
We feel then it's just gonna be, it's gonna push things out a little bit more. I I we kind of wanted to stick with the plan that we had committed.
My my question is, did you consider something, anything different, or did you just pick one thing and go with it?
No, we we considered it. We did consider it.
Okay, very good. Okay. So any more discussion on alternatives? John, you good?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Ernie?
Yeah, no, I guess I'm good. I just, my question there, quick question would be at a forty five degree angle. It seems like it'd even be easier to pull in and back out.
It might be. You might see the traffic coming at you, coming on the entrance.
Yeah, more than than like perpendicular. But I guess if they considered it. I'm okay.
Yeah. Okay, moving right along. Is the requested variance substantial?
I would say no in light of what's currently there.
Yeah.
There's no greenery being removed. It's kind of just maintaining status quo in a different form.
If you put it that way, yes. If you look, if you look at the zoning requirement, you could argue that it is, but why would you? Then I then I hear you say it. Matter of fact, it makes sense. Currents, current state, what is the current state and what is the proposed state? Makes sense to take to keep it that way. Is this going to have an adverse effect on the physical and environmental conditions of the area? I don't think so. I don't see how it could really.
I do have one question.
Yeah.
I noticed there's a parking lot light in there. Are they gonna reinstall a parking lot lights? Or the traffic that are going to be parked there at least one? Because I do notice on the one photograph, there's a parking lot light. And a sidewalk. It's they're over the sidewalk, so. Or is it gonna be darker there?
We we could, we could possibly relocate that. We didn't, we didn't take that into consideration, but you're you're right. I guess we would have to look at checking if we could relocate that to one side or another.
That's the only question I have with that. I otherwise, I don't think there's an issue putting, like Marina said, there is no vegetation there. But I'm just wondering, people are walking through there and assuming that's what that light was for was for the walkway itself, not for parking. Or driving through.
Correct.
Yeah. Lighting lighting could could play an interesting part. It's not really what we're discussing, but that was a. In 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 use, that will be important. Whether or not this situation was self created. Yeah, but I'm I'm not, that's not a deal breaker on this. I think the alternative is, the alternative is not any change, which would be no additional parking, which was. We're not here to make you spin your wheels for nothing. So I understand trying to make progress. Any other questions or comments from any members of the board? John, how how would you feel about proposing a motion for us?
Okay, I can propose a motion. I'd like to make a motion. For forty nine Court Street. To add nine additional parking spaces. In the current lot of that contains two hundred and thirty one parking areas with additional nine that would create two hundred and forty. My thing is I would still like to see. A parking lot light that's on the sidewalk so people are walking through possibly in the winter time or summer or in the dark. I'm not sure how dark it gets there at night in that area. But that's the only thing, that's the only question I have with it is if they would. Use reuse that parking lot fixture or light or put something there. So that area is lit now. So otherwise, I'd like to make a motion to approve this project.
Without objection, John, could I add a few more words to that? Could I add that the applicant considers. Landscaping improvements over time as 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 they're available to them.
Sure.
I I understand and I've I've seen that the applicant does take care of their properties and but I would just like them to. Know that we would like them to consider going forward if they have the ability to make improvements to the landscape. We would appreciate it. Not binding. Can I get a second on that motion with the little extra words? Second, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, then. Good luck going forward and thank you for coming to see us. That was that was four, that was four to nothing. That's super majority. That satisfies. The requirement with.
Yes, it does.
The county requirements. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tito or anybody else, staff people? Do we have any other business before us?
No other business, no.
I guess we gotta start looking for another member.
We do. We'll take recommendations. If you know anybody, please have them send your resume, John. I know. I know you have a standing recommendation, so I'll I'll try that one again. We do have a new mayor here, so he may consider. Was it Nancy? Was her? What was the name?
You mean the one that I gave you?
Yes.
Nancy Lewis.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, she's a, she's an assistant VP over BU.
Right.
Very bright, very reasonable.
Yeah.
No nonsense.
We'll forward that recommendation again. And if anybody else has anybody that they think would be interested, let us know.
Okay, very good. We'll be in touch. And seeing no other business, I make a motion to adjourn. Could I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
See you next month.
Bye, good night.
Thank you. Yep, thank you all.